Ms. Lisa, come on. I'll get you next. I thought you left, Catherine.
Um, Laura, the, um, Sand Island issue, the, in the July meeting last year with the Corps of Engineers and, um, specialists, they stated then that that was the West End's best chance of getting a beach back, and it is growing. Um, I'd like to tell y'all to please all listen very carefully to Glenn Coffey, worked for the Corps of Engineers for over twenty-five years, and has worked on projects like this. I have the letter and I haven't sent it off yet, but I promise I'll do that. So if anybody hasn't done it, he's right, we've gotta be more proactive. Um, I hope you have some quick questions, Jeff, one, and then I have something else, as usual. Um, was the last berm maintained?
Well, we did as we could. I mean, you know, if, if we had some sand...
Was it maintained according to FEMA guidelines, I guess I should ask?
Well, all I can, that's a hard question to answer, Lisa. I mean, we did what we could with the equipment and personnel we had and the materials. And, uh, the biggest thing we had to deal with was the walkovers.
Okay. Um, who owns Beambel?
The town is responsible for maintaining Beambel Boulevard, except with the fact that if, when we have these type storms, the state can come in and afford some assistance. That's separate than FEMA. I'll, I'll try to go there briefly. But state comes in, depending on the level of damages. Their, their threshold is like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. If it's, if the damages are in excess of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, then they can potentially come on board and help us out with some ER funds, it's emergency repair funds. So, we got the state to some extent, and then FEMA kicks in if it's a really major type disaster. If, if we don't reach either of those levels, then it's our problem.
Okay. Um, let's see. Um, as we discussed at the, um, annual meeting on Saturday, um, the West End owners are disenfranchised, we do not vote down here. Um, you had said that you would be open to a poll of the West End owners. Um, your email said, in conclusion, the town will likely make a final decision on the proposed levy, which I know has been changed to a berm again, for the island's west end at a meeting of its choice following the public informational meeting on May thirteenth. In the meantime, the council will be meeting with EMA officials prior to the public meeting to get the latest and most accurate information to pass along to you. Today's paper stated the council could vote Tuesday to develop a berm proposal for the Federal Emergency Management Agency. FEMA would make the final decision about funding the project. Um, are you willing to grant the DIPOA Association a few weeks to conduct a non-binding vote on this issue to present to you and the council?
Well, let me, let me kinda answer to what, to your comments. Yes, at the POA meeting last week, I did get up and make a fairly lengthy presentation. I hope it wasn't as long as it was tonight. But, as I told you, you know, our whole goal in this thing is to try to get the information out. That's one reason we're here tonight, that's why the technology's here, is to try to reach out to as many people as we can. I think all the council members said earlier that they would like to hear what people have to say and give you that opportunity. So, I'm interested in hearing whatever it is folks have to say. And what I mentioned about, you mentioned about a poll or a vote, somebody even asked, could we, could we just have this, a vote of the public versus a vote of the council? And my understanding is no, can't do it that way. But certainly a non-binding poll, or, or whatever you want, or petition, or whatever, I don't know, is something that the citizens can do. Now, as far as me telling you that we'll give you two, three, four weeks to do this, I don't know that we're gonna be and have that much luxury here as far as time goes, because I've already mentioned June, June twenty-eighth is the sort of drop-dead date. Uh, so, I guess my answer is yes and no. Yes, I'd be happy for y'all, for people to express their feelings, uh, but I don't know that we can have that open-ended or have it be a long time.
Well, I actually changed the question after I got some information from you, because that, my initial question was to grant enough time to conduct a poll, and when I found out we only had it until June twenty-eighth, I changed it to two weeks, which would, which would actually be almost impossible feat to try to find out who all owns property on the West End and to actually, you know, contact them. But I just didn't know if, since we're disenfranchised, if you all would be interested in, in trying to get something that is somewhat, um...
You're trying to pull him in with his disenfranchised...
No, I, I, well, we are disenfranchised, we do not vote down here.
But whose fault is that?
Well, it's, Jeff, these, these are second homes that, you know...
Lisa, I, I know that.
So, I mean, it's really not, it's a very deep issue to, to those of us who cannot vote down here, because we really feel like our voice is...
You know what? Wherever you vote, I can't vote there either.
Well, then I'm not...
But let me, let me say...
But I'm not coming into your neighborhood and putting in policies, and I can't get to a house on it. We're on the north side, by the way.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, and again, the people, you, the people can do whatever you want to get our attention. If you wanna take polls, or you do what you wanna do, I'd be more than happy to, to read it and look it over. But time is an issue here, I'll just say it again that way. I think I dropped the microphone, sorry. But anyway, uh, but, you know, like I, I mentioned this at the meeting the other day, I said, if it's one thing that kinda gets me a little bit, and I think that's why I like, somebody, is, don't tell me this disenfranchised stuff. Don't tell me that we're, we're the redheaded stepchildren of Dolphin Island. I don't wanna really hear that, because that ain't the way this old boy operates. You know, the, the property owners on the West End, to Jeff Cuyer, are as important as anybody else on this island. I'm the mayor of this whole island, not my neighborhood, not those people who vote here, I'm all of your members, whether you like me or not. And, and I'm gonna do the best I can as an individual, and I understand, as I said, I mean, for, for those who own property here but don't live here, or don't vote here, I personally can't help that. You know, that's within your purview to, to, to own property, live, vote, you know, I can't help that. And, and if, if, you all can be in the election as far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem with that. But, so I just wanna say that, that that's not the way I look at it. And, and I know it's easy to sit around your coffee table and feel bad about the situation and think that nobody cares, but that's not the case.
I always try to end things on a happy or funny note, so...
Yeah, let's do that.
It sounds like we need to, oh, stimulate the mobility economy and go buy a four-wheel drive vehicle, okay?
All right. I, I promised that, gentlemen.
You might wanna add.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, well, something was said just then, and I'm listening as good as anybody in here. The fact that the council does or does not go forward with the appeal doesn't lock us in. You say, once we apply for the appeal, they'll say, what can you do to help us? That we accept it cart-bonch. So, at this point, well, we have a deadline that we've gotta meet to make a decision. But that decision isn't bound, and it's not locked in stone. They're gonna come back and either accept it or reject our appeal. But even then, we can back out if we think it's not the right way to go. So I want everybody to realize that.
Yes, sir.
But when you, they wave their check in front of you, you're gonna be able, you know, say no at half one.
He said, he said when they wave the check in front of you, it's harder maybe to say no. And the only, I'll let you, I'll let you finish, but the only, and I've already kinda touched on that. Certainly, that's something that's on the table, and I've already laid that out. We, at this point, we can get it for fifteen percent. If we are forced to get it in, in a subsequent year, likely it would be a hundred percent. But that's, I'm just throwing that out for information.
And, and thank y'all, everybody. Um, and thanks to the squeaky wheel concept. I think Wanda could probably motivate us all with some specific bullet points in her next email, of where to get the letter, where, you know, the email I get from Wanda Sandiger is great, I appreciate it.
Good, go ahead.
Um, I live on Cadillac, uh, which is between St. Stevens, I'm sorry, I live on Mallard, lived there ten years. Uh, St. Stevens and Cadillac, we have the north canals. And after Ivan and Katrina, we were left tongue out to dry. We were left tongue out to dry by FEMA, by Alabama, by the city. Those canals have been filled every time by what you build on the south side. If you put Christmas trees, they're in our canals. If you put sand, they're in our canals. You put walkovers, they're in our canals. I've watched them dig those walkovers out. And every time, we've been the last one you'll listen to. You've been great, Jeff. But you've always had a technicality and a squeakier wheel. And, you know, my question to you is, you're talking about absorbing the cost of building a gravel road on the beachside of a berm, relaying ditches, probably new utilities, absorbing that cost now for fear of the cost of repairing a paved road in the future. I think FEMA's selling you down the road. I really am. I do, I do not represent the ninety property owners along Silver Kay Canal, but I will tell you, we tried to clean our own canals out with our own money, and you told us no for two years. You did do it in the end. You did pick, you did find money in the end, and it was associated with wetland areas, and it was miracle money. And I, God bless you for finding it, 'cause we didn't, you know, we brought, we all had to spend a couple thousand personally to do the extra work. But you may not find that next year. And I, I don't think FEMA's gonna be there for you, and you, and you're convinced they are. And while I'm saying it, you build a gravel road on a beachside, and you gotta maintain that versus the fear of repairing a, uh, and depending on Mr. Coffey, I think Mr. Coffey's a better bet.
All right. And let me say, um, just a couple things. First of all, no, I don't, I'm not betting on FEMA. I mean, that'd be a bad bet right off the top, I'll tell you that. But I'm just trying to relay that, you know, the things that we're hearing, things we're being told. Don't, don't think that everything I've said here tonight that I believe in, okay? I'm putting on a, I'm putting on a, a good face here for you all, and I'm relaying information, I'm the messenger, all right? I'm not telling you that every one of these things that I think is the best thing since sliced bread, or I think it's pretty bad stuff, I'm not getting into that, okay? I'm trying to stay neutral and relay information, and I'm listening to everything you all are saying, whether you think I am or not. But to the canal situation, I didn't know that we stopped you guys from doing the work, did we? How did we do that?
You declined this permit.
Okay, but there must have been, I don't know why, I, I, we can talk about that after, I don't understand that, because, you know, when, when the, when the monies came along through this grant, and you're right, that probably won't happen again. Uh, it, it was a godsend to get that money, that we could do it. But if, and as you stated, and it goes back to what I said earlier, they, that money didn't come to help people that lived on the side of the canal to get their boats in and out. It was to help reestablish the habitat for the fish and the crabs and the ducks and all. That's where the money came from, but that's fine, because we humans, uh, get the benefit of it too. But it was given for the restoration of habitats, not for me and you.
And again, you used the technicality to deny us repairing our properties for over two years. There's an incredible amount of technicalities that are gonna be created. Like, I think FEMA's literally trying to cut this island in half and wash that property away, 'cause then, they don't even have to write checks.
Gotcha.
You're drawing a line in sand, and nobody's gonna bypass the schoolhouse.
My name is Zach Ashby, I'm a Quebec Court. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an engineer, I'm a stopper, so I know a lot about loss of property.
Just to build on my, uh, neighbor here from Mallard Court, on the cost, what is fifteen percent of this berm?
We don't know. I mean, assuming, I'm, I don't know, I would, I hate to throw out a big number, but...
Okay.
Yeah, you'd probably look at, yeah, you'd probably look at that.
Last time we did this, we had to pay fifteen percent, correct?
No, not actually, but we have done it.
Clinton Bush, my brother.
No.
We also had donations from Western Restaurant.
That's not true either. There, the, the last storm, the federal and state government picked up the whole hundred percent. There are times when that happens, but it's, it's because the areas get like totally wiped out. Not just Dolphin Island, but area-wide, if it reaches a certain level of damage, we get, uh, we get out of our fifteen percent. That gets picked up by the feds and the state, so, go ahead.
Well, I know in the past that, that the citizens of the West End have donated money for the berm. Okay, and that's not gonna happen this time, I'm, we're not gonna donate any money for a berm, it's gonna cut us off. How much is a three-mile, or give or take, gravel road gonna cost?
Don't have that number yet either.
Okay. Uh, how much is it gonna cost to maintain that road? Again, building on my neighbor, uh, from Mallard. Okay, let's double these costs, that we don't know what they are. Let's double them, because the revenue is gonna be cut in half, at least, on the West End from rental income. Can we agree on that? Okay, so now, we're to a point where, let's fix this to get the federal funding now, but we don't know how much it's gonna cost us to do all this. And we don't know where we're gonna get the money, because we're gonna cut off half of our income. Okay, I got a lot of notes scribbled down, I'm gonna be quick. The mayor and the town council, they're in place to look out for the best interest of the citizens of Dolphin Island. That's including the West End, whether we believe we're disenfranchised or not. We do pay a lot of the bills around here. Um, the benefit of this berm is very small, and it's unknown in several cases. You look at the benefits, whether they're at town size or not, um, they're unknown. And most of the benefits are benefits to the berm itself, not to the citizens. The challenges are more appropriately negatives, are detrimental to the citizens of the West End, and there's several more. I mean, there's three to one, and there's a lot more that were not mentioned here. So, again, I think this is, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm repeating a lot of the things people have said, but we, we gotta stop and think about what we're doing. You know, we're gonna do this, and, and, and everything's unknown, and it's all goes back to, well, we just need to do this because we have a deadline. Let's stop and think about this deadline, and I know the gentleman makes a good point, and I thought about that point. Let's get it out there, when, when we get past the deadline at that point, come back, let's see what we can do later. Once this ball gets rolling, it's not gonna stop. It's not gonna stop, and we've got an issue right now with the lawsuit, the Corps of Engineer lawsuit, what's been going on, nine years, ten years? Guess it's gonna be a lot longer than that, so, this is, this whole meeting will be moot once it's all said and done.
Yep. Okay, Zach. I was, I was thinking today, if your grandfather was here, he'd be here, wouldn't he? He'd be up here in the front row. Well, anyway, uh, to your point about us not knowing some of these costs, and that's true, I am certainly hopeful, and I think that's the way we gotta go. We will know, we will have some of that information before this council makes some kind of decision. I mean, we, we will have some of those, those numbers available to us, or at least some rough estimates. The biggest unknown, I think, as it relates to the, it's, I think it's pretty easy to quantify what it's gonna cost to build the road, this, this gravel road. The big unknown, in my opinion, is how often are you gonna have to maintain it? I don't think anybody knows that answer, but obviously, that's, that's an issue. Okay, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Pupura, and we're gonna go right across the back of the room, the gentleman with the cap, and then Mr. Minus. We've been here, folks, about an hour and a half. Uh, all that means is, we've been here an hour and a half. I took longer at the beginning than what I thought, and I apologize for that. Okay, Phil.
Hi, I'm Phil Pupura, I own a house on the south side of Beambel, right by the gravel road, we could, probably. I also own, um, part of a real estate company and a rental management company. I didn't like the original berm that was out on the water. It caused tons of problems, couldn't see, people couldn't get over it, we lost a lot of rentals. Um, it, you know, I have eighty-eight-year-old, my, my best friend's eighty-eight years old, he couldn't get over it, so coming to my house was not an issue any longer. I understand that FEMA is only here to protect the road, that's not gonna change. What I think we need to do is, if we're going to even consider a berm and consider taking their berm, we need to get it back out on the beach. I don't think we should accept the fact that they say that it's not an issue, we won't put it out there. If we have to kick in money to make the shoreline more stable, so they could put their berm on it, if we have to use the Bush money, or whatever money we need to get, we need to get it back out on the beach, not on the road.
Okay, all right, thank you. The, my technician over here is saying that you can also, you'll be able to go on Facebook, I believe is what he told me, and search for Dolphin Island, and you should be able to find this as well. So, not now, but maybe not when you get home, but at some point shortly. Mr. Minus, what you know?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for having the meeting and allowing people to be informed directly as opposed to rumors. The rumors can be detrimental. And I understand y'all have a hard decision to make, but I'd like to point out a couple things. I have property on the West End, I'm on the south side, have two houses on the very West End. We were lucky enough to, to survive Katrina, uh, and been on the island since the early nineteen nineties. I've watched the beach wash away in front of my property over these years, and I think the berm itself, where you're proposing it, is you're writing off anyone south of the Beambel Boulevard. And we are, it's very divisive for the town itself, for the citizens, and, and everybody that is affected down here. I don't think it will be beneficial to the people on the north side because of the problems that we had with the berm before. I mean, you talk about people that didn't like the berm on the beach, what do you think the people are gonna think when they drive down Beambel Boulevard and there's wall of sand that blocks the view of the beach, or the access from the beach on that side? But one thing, a couple things that you said that I think are very important, is you said that FEMA said it's more likely that we'd be funded again if we do build this berm. They also said it's more likely that we would not be funded again if you don't. They haven't told you definitely that they would fund it if you use this berm, and they haven't told you definitely that they won't if you don't. And they also haven't told you that if you fund it, and we have a storm and they fund it, would they repeat, repetitively do it again? Now, the last berm that they had, they said they were gonna put it way out in the water, and they were gonna build a break to break the waters from hitting the berm and the causing it to, um, wash away as quickly as it did. And at the very last minute, they changed and put it on the water after you had advertised to everyone else that it would be further out. And I know that wasn't y'all's fault, and I don't blame y'all for that. But I would suggest to you that his, FEMA has a history of not being trustworthy about what they're exactly gonna do, and that's not gonna change in the future. And we're betting the future of the West End and of the island, the economic of the island, on promises that are not definite either way from FEMA. And I would ask you to ask yourselves, each of y'all are voting on something that, had you been left alone and asked for a solution to the West End, none of you would have come up with this proposed solution. And y'all, y'all are letting FEMA bully you into something that you know is not right and not good for the whole of the island. Now, I would say, I'd also want you to think about this proposed road. I've got the gravel roads on my side roads, and that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But since the storms, y'all can't maintain them. The slightest wind or water covers them up with the sand, and you don't have the manpower to, to maintain these little short streets, and there's only a few of them, you're certainly not gonna have the manpower to maintain a five-mile road. I think you're going to also have some problems with financing the road all the way down, and you're gonna end up, you've got this June deadline, you're gonna end up with some, uh, litigation, and I'm not saying that as a threat, somebody's gonna sue over this, and it's not gonna get done this year. It's gonna go into the courts, and so you're not gonna solve the problem for this, this year. And an alternative, I think we should look at alternatives to this berm as, as opposed to saying, should we take what FEMA's giving us, yes or no? Instead, we need to have another, another kind of solution. From what y'all are saying is that y'all are concerned about the ability to refinance and rebuild the road and the infrastructure if that happens. There are other ways to do that. Has anybody looked into whether Lloyds and London would insure this road and the infrastructure private by the island or some other insurance company, to where we don't have to rely on FEMA to do that? That's something that would probably cost a lot less than building this road and trying to maintain it. Um, I think the property values from the whole entire West End will be devalued, and the uses on your island is gonna go way down, which hurts your businesses, will hurt your taxes, hurts everybody that's affected around here. But I would ask you to look at, is this something that I really think is a long-term solution? To spend what I've been told is approximately ten million dollars on a berm, which is more than half the cost of an engineered beach. There are other funds that are available, I think property owners are willing to contribute to the berm or re-nurish beach. I don't think a berm's an answer, whether it be on the beach or on the road. I think we've got to have an engineered beach. It will last longer than one storm, and this term, berm won't last longer than one storm. It's ten million dollars that we're asking the Gulf to wash away once again. That's why we get a bad rap in Washington, and that's why they don't wanna give us any more money. 'Cause we put something out there that's not gonna last, and I don't think this is any different. Thank you.
I can just say, Jay, no, I haven't checked with Lloyds and London on the insuring the road, I haven't done that, and I don't know that anybody has with the town. But, uh, obviously, that's something we can do, but you make a lot of good points. Uh, yes, sir, the gentleman with the cap there. I know some of you, but not all of you. Probably the ones I don't know are the ones that are disenfranchised. No, I'm just kidding. Just seeing if y'all are listening, see? Yes, sir.
I'm John Chapman, I do have property on south end of the, or the south side of what would be, whether we call it a berm or a levy, I call it a dam, but whatever it is, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna help me. I would like to ask everybody that's here, that would be, that has property, that'd be on the south side of this thing, please stand up. Okay, thank you. I can understand that, that this group you see or saw standing is not very important to FEMA, and we're not particularly important to the state, but I hope that we are important to the town. And you, the whole council has said that this is not a good deal, but it's only deal that we're offered. If the town's part of this is seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, it'll grow to a million, million and a quarter before it's over. And that's money that we spent, we've had two berms. Why we want a third one, why the town council want a third one is, kind of escapes me. I'd rather see that money spent on something, a breakwater out there that would let the waves break off of the beach, take the sting out of them before they hit the beach. I watched the last berm, it did, you know, first storm that came, it was a drive-by storm, we didn't even get hit, and it's gone. But, I'll be brief, that's, that's basically all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, Paul Fox and, uh, my family, the top lotters, uh, have property on Vargas Court. Uh, notice I just said property, the house is gone. But, uh, Jeff, we've known each other a long time, and I have the utmost respect for you, and I'm gonna pray for you, 'cause this is a tough decision you've gotta make. Uh, and, and everybody has said that they don't, you know, like, uh, the proposal that's being considered, uh, but nobody's really given you any other alternatives to think about. Uh, the gentleman just spoke, he, he briefly touched on it, and that's the idea of jetties. That it's been proven all around the world that jetties will break down the force of the, of the waves. And, uh, let's give that some consideration, I don't know if you've already done that or not, but if not, I, I highly suggest you do. Uh, also, the gentleman that was, uh, speaking earlier, uh, Jay Minus, if y'all don't know, he's an attorney with, uh, Lance Pipe and Cook, and, uh, he's very informed, and, and, uh, if we need some information from an attorney, we need somebody getting involved, I, I recommend we use somebody that's, uh, a property owner down here to, to be that attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ladon, you want me to couple of comments? And then I'm gonna get, I think it's Ms. Penniger, yep, Kay Penniger, and then a lady kinda halfway up this side, I didn't see your face, I saw a brief hand. No? Vicki, okay. So we'll go after him, Kay, and then Vicki. Go ahead, Ladon.
Hi, Jeff, I'm Ladon Swine, I own a house on the east end. People, several people have talked about breakwaters offshore, the beach, and I have a little bit of experience in costing those out. We submitted a proposal for the stimulus money to try to protect four thousand feet of the causeway, just south of Jimson.
Yeah, tell them who you're with, Ladon.
I'm with, uh, Auburn University and Mississippi Alabama Sea Grant Consortium. I'm the director for both, the marine line. That four thousand feet cause, we budgeted that out, it's four million dollars. So, just to give you a rough idea, and these are concrete breakwaters like that, it's built to go home, about four and a half feet tall. So four thousand feet, about a million dollars per thousand foot.
Okay. And I think, I go ahead.
One other, the question I had about FEMA, if they abandon the south side, and that's the way I interpret what they would do. If there were, was an engineered solution down the road five years or so, would they then come back in and help? That would be a question I'd have for them.
Yep. That's a guess, that is a question that we have, but, I'll tell you, we can't, we're not talking directly with them, but that is a question. Okay, uh, Ms. Penniger, and while you're coming up, I'll just say to Ladon's point about the offshore breakwater thing he was talking about, we have estimated that a, an engineered beach would probably run three to four million dollars a mile. That's, that's sort of some rough numbers that we've been bouncing around as well. We've got about seven miles, give or take, of developed island, okay? From the east end to the west end of Beambel Boulevard, we're looking at roughly seven miles. So if you do the math, you're looking at twenty-two to thirty million dollars, give or take, it's just rough numbers. Ms. Kay, go ahead.
Okay, I have some concerns about berm. One of the biggest concerns is that it diverts too much attention, energy, resources from finding a more durable solution. I would love to see this kind of meeting about a more durable solution. My second big concern about this berm, we all know sand don't stay put. After Katrina, we had a lovely meeting at the golf course with all kinds of representatives from ecological, environmental, all kinds of scientists who have been studying beach nourishment, berm maintenance, what makes a berm stay. The one thing they all said, you don't build a berm that's gonna stay by dumping sand on the beach. They all said you plant the sea oats, the other rhizozonal plants, let them grow up, let this berm grow with the plants. This is what I would like, if a berm is going to...